Okay, before we start the meeting, I would like to inform everyone that all meetings are live and recorded through YouTube. Please make sure unless you are speaking, your device is muted. Thank you. Are we ready, Susan? All right, let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, all members of council are present tonight. I am looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Move.
And there's one, there is one change on the agenda. Susie Wilson has requested not to be reappointed to the Economic Development Team. So if I can get a motion as amended with that. Hearing a motion from Counselor Haugen to approve the agenda is our second. Hearing a second by Counselor Holling, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment. Is there anyone here that'd like to comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? I was going to start with Mr. Lowman who had put in a request.
Thank you, Mayor Byrd, and distinguished counselors. Thank you very much. I'm here tonight, well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the 100-year celebration. My wife and I enjoyed it thoroughly. Great job, congratulations to all involved putting that on. I'm here asking for the Moore's family and the local community to see if the city of Scappus can help support what the Moore family has been raising funds for in the last 10 years, and that's for the Ryan Moore Fieldhouse, which will be south of the gymnasium. Our ask is, is permit fees, is to try to escape the permit fees. The community has raised about $120,000, $130,000. There's not much contingency in there. There's a down payment on the building, and we hope to break ground and build that building in November. It'll be a multi-use building, it'll be used by all. It was a dream of the Moore's family because of Ryan, who died unexpectedly of a brain injury, neurosis, right after high school. They had a great working relationship with Coach Medley, and this will be the 11th year for fundraising for them. And we would really hope that the city of Scappus could forfeit, ask, forfeit our fees so that we can move on with this project. We have the fees, it's been submitted, the permits are ready, but it's about $7,500 in fees. So if you can find amongst yourselves to somehow find a corner for that, I know it's difficult. This is our second request. I know there's been some changes, city, and whatever you could do would surely be appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor.
Well, I'll speak to that. I know that we've been frustrated at times with other governmental agencies not waiving fees for us, and I think knowing Ryan, knowing what's going on here, I think it would be very appropriate to honor this request because there's a whole lot, unless there's some legal reasons we can't do it, I think it would be the right thing to do.
Peter. Your code actually doesn't give you the discretion in order to waive system development charges. That was done because of public concern that the council would waive for some and not others, showing some favoritism, and so the way that was addressed in your code was simply not to allow any waivers of system development charges. And that is, under your code, at this point, you actually don't have the discretion in order to do it.
Can you move the mic closer, please? We heard it, just for the future. Are these all system development fees or are these other fees?
I can't speak to that.
Okay. So I know that we can waive the other fees. There might be some fees within this that we can waive. Can we at least look at it and get it back to the council at the next council meeting? So we'll see what we can do.
The effort's great, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And thanks for your effort on this, too. We appreciate it.
All right, Dan Fennell?
It's Dan McCoy, I don't know if that's the right one, I wanted to talk to you about the vandalism under the JP West Bridge.
No, sir, no. No. I was Dan Fennell.
Okay, sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The no confidence vote by the police officers, not done lightly, done after years and years of operation, management, lack of training, lack of the ability to, seven police coverage, broken promises by the administration to have two officers at all times who respond at code priority false. We look at what happened last weekend with your 100-year celebration. Some of your officers just got done working nine and seven days in a row because the chief, with the allowance of the interim city manager, left your city in the middle of this celebration and left you unsafed and understaffed. Had to be saved by the sheriff's office and have a safe. This is the last in a long line of, by the police. Talk to your officer, reach out to them and find out what they've been complaining about, literally for you. It's not being told to them. So this is our only option, for me to step up tonight on behalf of the officer, tell you how long you go back. In March of 2021, Ms. Sykes, when Ms. Rains was his assistant, handed complaints from three police officers, of whom are no longer here, who have left because of Chief Miller. If she has told, not aware of complaints, I would look into that issue. A year ago, I sent a complaint to the Department of Public Security, meaning about, at best, early state police academy, about whether background investigation actually being done on officers. That was sent back to Ms. Sykes and Ms. Rains, who never heard complaints. Sometime after that period, it's the evaluation that they conducted, which we have never seen. Have you seen it? So what does it say? Should be read to the public. I have tried to get, see what it says on behalf of the officer. City has fought on to fighting. City would not hesitate to file frank and file officer. Why is the, why is the city fighting this evaluation? Came on the heels of a complaint, licensing. Have officers that are about to leave, and in resignation, they complained about manager, how your city manager did not allow him to step down from a police officer. Put that out in writing to representative of the FOP. A managerial standpoint, an insurance standpoint, and a fellow officer's standpoint, that is a recipe for disaster. Have you, as the city council asked your insurance company, that is a good idea? I suggest someone do that. For creating a recipe for litigation between officers amongst officers, whoever comes in front of your department, if you can find someone, I try to manage your department. I represent police officers all over the state of Washington. I have never heard a worse idea, very small. That is absolutely setting this department, fellow officers, up, failure. At least nine police officers left this, past five years. Have you seen the letter? Because I know what they say, I've seen them. Have you? Need to ask people, what is actually happening, saying to city manager? Have you seen the letter? Have you seen? I have sent a public records request, also sent, have sent a public records request and emails from Ms. Rains to me after. I can, it's expressed in your package, letters that you talked to them, left about the state, whether they think it's a good idea, Chief Miller to any capacity, or as a future officer, on my long, fact that there has not been an independent outside investigation by someone is public, independent violation. This were any other place, amount of allegations could have been investigated, could have been facts given to you publicly. There's a huge problem. It should not have eight officers showing up here, spend the seriousness.
Thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. Fennell a question?
Sure.
Mr. Fennell, you articulated a number of problems there that we should, you think we should look into. I can't remember that, that's quite a long list. You are, can you provide that in writing to us?
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate that.
My question is, glad the city's permitted to send a directive to the mayor. Glad the mayor.
Well, if there's complaints regarding, Peter?
Can send it to me.
You can send it to Peter or you can send it to me.
That would be great, I appreciate that. We'll do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a follow-up question with legal counsel.
Yes.
Peter, what is our right as council to look at personnel files of city staff? Could you please give us an explanation?
So you as a city council have three employees, or in your case, four, because you have separate employment council. Your city manager, or interim city manager in this, me as your city attorney, your employment council, and your municipal judge. And other than that, your council bylaws and your team agreement do not allow you to go below the city manager level or the city attorney level and do this sort of inquiries. And the reason for that is, actually dates back to the police department and a series of investigations that was done in the past that resulted in a substantial lawsuit.
Oh, it's also the charter.
Right.
Thank you very much, unless you have more to add to that, Peter?
You know, what I have been, I am not employment council, but what I have been told is that every time that we've received a complaint, that it has been, to the extent that the allegations in the complaint are specific enough to investigate, that that they have been investigated by the employment council, coordinated with CIS, which is our insurance carrier, and that they have been resolved. There have been a couple of complaints in the past year that have come to me through kind of, because of unusual circumstances, I have conferred with, there are allegations that simply are not, there just isn't enough to, you know, it's like, there'll be something like, there's an issue with culture, but it won't, it won't be a specific, this incident happened on this date. I've conferred with insurance council on it. In one instance where I was given very specific allegations that involved the district attorney's office, I spoke with both the district attorney and as well as the senior prosecutor who was handling that specific case. And I could understand why the person that made the complaint thought what they thought, but in fact, once we understood all facts and circumstances, it was the opinion of the DA's office that everyone acted reasonably and as they would hope people would act under those circumstances. So that is the only quote-unquote complaint that I have had, I'll play first party involvement in.
Thank you. All right, let's continue on with public comments. Dan that's online that was speaking up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm going to go with the online person, then I'll come back. Go ahead.
Okay, my name's Dan McCoy, and I was talking to Officer Barnes in regards to the vandalism and graffiti down by the sixth, the JP West Bridge, and I've been noticing there was a lot more graffiti down there, and then also on the signage that they display the different types of plant life along the creek bed to help the erosion, keep the erosion down, someone tagged that, too. And so I, so I took pictures of it and I sent it off to Susan Reeve, and she says she would forward that on to the police. And I have a really concern that I start seeing this type of behavior, and in New York, they call it the broken window concept, is that if you take care of the smaller stuff, like jumping turnstiles and jaywalking, the big stuff won't come into your area as much. And so if I, if you want to talk offline and talk about technologies, there's lots of technology out there that we can catch these people and then have them clean it up instead of using our tax dollars to clean it up. Do you have any questions for me or concerns?
No, if you could email me some of that information, that would be great.
I've already sent everything to Steve and Susan Reeve.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and she should have had pictures there, too.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you have the pictures in front of you?
No, I don't, but I'll get them and be able to see them.
Well, I sure appreciate your time in the matter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, please step forward, just state your name and residence, city of residence for the record.
Are you speaking to me?
Speak in the microphone? No, Dan, we moved forward.
Okay, thank you.
Please, you got to speak close to the microphone, so.
Yeah. Okay, my name is Ray, I've been here for years, and back in the 70s and 80s, during that time, police service, investigated.
Ray, can you come closer to the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
The then-city manager, Kent Taylor, researched an idea presented to the council. The idea was, we could contract with Clackamas County for police services. Clackamas County agreed to absorb all of our officers, so somebody lost their job. And part of the agreement was, they had to have police car in the Estacada city limits 24 hours a day. And this, the council adopted that idea. We had a leadership problem there. We had a chief who was promoted way beyond his level of competency. The officers were kind of a mixed bag, I think some were pretty good, some weren't. They all got a chance to work at Clackamas County. Anyway, just today, I called the Estacada city manager because I was curious about how this all worked out over the years in Estacada, and she said it's, they're pretty happy with it. They now pay $700,000 a year, police services, which would be much less if they had their own department. She also said that Happy Valley, Wilsonville contracts with the sheriff's department. In the case of those two towns, the cars are marked as Happy Valley or Wilsonville, or not marked Clackamas County, which, you know, that's kind of nice. Now, I realize there's a lot of pride, usually in community, naturally there is, but would it be a good idea, the council, to study this possibility? And if it becomes apparent that you could secure equal service, or maybe even better service for a lesser price, do you owe it to the taxpayers of Scappus to take a look at that? That's the concept, pretty simple, and there's probably a number of cities in the Northwest that you could talk to about their experience with this. That's pretty much it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Right in the middle. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, my name's Marissa Jacobs, I'm speaking to you tonight as a resident of Scappus. First, I'd like to just thank the council as well as the committee for putting on an awesome 100-year celebration. It was outstanding, it was well-organized, orchestrated. We were, my husband and I really enjoyed ourselves, so thank you, everybody, that was outstanding. So tonight, I'm here to continue the charge forward and talking about the wonderful road. So over the past 11 months, I've been closely following the progress, the progression of the Grabhorn property. And within the last few months, the ad hoc committee has done an outstanding job consolidating and categorizing the community's inputs, identifying opportunities and risks to developing the land. One of the major obstacles the committee has been working through was the pool, and the last session hearing, you heard the overwhelming results from the pool survey, and as a result, you unanimously decided to pull the pool for consideration for design for the committee. So thank you very much, that was a big obstacle. So now it's time to remove the last obstacle for the committee to provide you with a thoughtful, realistic park design, and that's the road, the extension of Captain Cussera to E.J. Smith. So over the past several months, they have unearthed five critical arguments that you have been hearing about over the past several months, and I'm going to summarize those for you so they stay top of mind. So number one, most important, I think, is the legal constraints to the seller covenants. It was revealed that the property is to be used for public use for a public park in perpetuity. Two, there's three main issues, or four actually, of the geology of the land. One, it's in the 100-year flood plain, it has flooded in the past year. The organ haz view, geo-hazard viewer, and organ hazard explorer has identified the land as high liquefaction, as well as very strong for earthquake shaking. And we've also shared out the critical root zone as it relates to the trees that are bordering on that property. So next, we move to the survey results. Essentially, there were two surveys, the first one in fall 2020, which didn't ask anything about a road, but you got a lot of feedback with people saying, no, thank you, to a road. And then the summer 2021 results, where 70% did not want the road. And I'd like to publicly call out, I was against this survey for various reasons, even though that survey supports my argument. Fourth is utility needs. We've been hearing over the past year that there's a need for utilities. Well, in looking through the master water plans, there are redundancies that have been built in prior to your acquiring of the Grabhorn property. So I do not think utility needs is a strong enough argument there when we have redundancies built in. And fifth, and finally, is the dog park. The dog park is one of the highly-used amenities within the community, and it has been evaluated by Jim Lycus, who heads up the dog park community, that there is no suitable replacement to relocate that park. So based on those given facts and the constraints that each of those get, brings, and the task you've given the community, it's time to do the right thing and let the community deliver for you. Vote to remove the road in any form of emergency egress from consideration for this property. As our elected officials, your oath is to the people who voted you in, so please continue to listen to the people and enable the ad hoc committee to deliver a park design. Should you ignore the wants of your constituents and continue to pursue a road on the Grabhorn property, your actions will impact the committee's ability to deliver a design which interred would render their time spent on this work as a waste and incomplete. Please remove this obstacle. I highly encourage and ask you to please put this motion on the agenda and vote this road out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, step on up. Welcome.
You've heard from me before, my name is Peggy Shoemaker LeBlanc, and I live adjacent to the Grabhorn property. And I have sent you recently a letter from my arborist, accompanied with a letter that I wrote. And I am in agreement with Marissa in that I think the obstacle of the road needs to be either voted out or agreed upon, so the ad hoc committee can move forward with the task that you have set forth to them. It's a beautiful piece of property that lends itself to so many different ways that you could give a lot of ability to the public to use it in ways that it's actually going to benefit people of all ages, and I think that should be a major consideration that goes forth when the planning of it. But the ad hoc committee's hands are tied, and now that you have gotten rid of the obstacle of the pool, they have a little bit more maneuvering room, but they don't know what they have to work with. And I myself, if I don't know what I have to work with, I'm not very good about coming up with a plan that would be suitable for as many people as possible. So I asked also that you consider adding to the agenda, to finally give us a vote on the road, whether you're going to do it or not going to do it, so the ad hoc committee can move forward and complete a plan to present to you in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the public comments. Next item, new business, Corona State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds established by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Ms. Rains?
Yes, Mayor and Council. So right here, we have a discussion for you on the city's art funding. So you'll see in the packet this evening that we're getting about $1.6 million. We do have all the paperwork filled out, but haven't received the funds as of yet. You'll see included in the packet, I did include the latest information I had on what the money can be used for, and then of course, the staff report does include some suggestions and recommendations on what the funds can be used for. So you've got two requests for funding from outside agencies, and we actually have representatives from both of those agencies here tonight. So we have Chief Pritchard and Paul Vogel, and they'll speak to you a little bit about their requests. And then we've got some recommendations that were put together by myself and other members of staff. So you had Dave who put in, and Daryl who put in the request for the water meter replacement. Normally, this, a replacement of this type would take, say, 10 to 15 years. With this money, we could actually do it all within two years, which would be really amazing, and these new meters are pretty great. You know, we have a pump station that's at the end of its useful life. We talked about thanking staff by giving each person We talked about thanking staff by giving each person a, you know, COVID bonus, so to speak, for working through the pandemic, coming in every day. And then, we also were recommending, and this was Chief Miller's recommendation, premium pay for patrol officers and command staff in the police department. That would be for the remainder of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. As I've noted here, these are approximate and subject to change. But this is essentially what we, how we think they should be broken down. And that Peter and, as well as Ashley, have also looked at these and seen that they are allowable expenses. So, this would paid for, as I said, over two years. So, we have a first installment that would be coming sometime this month, we believe. And then, the second installment, which will come about a year from now. So, I did recommend in here how that funding would lay out, just in terms of who would need what funding, when. That's why it's recommended the way it is. So, before we get into any questions, I thought we could have Chief Pritchard come and talk to you about his request, and then also Paul.
Chief Pritchard?
Is this close enough?
It's for them, not us.
Okay. Well, first of all, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak to you this evening. Before I get into my presentation, I also want to echo some of the comments from the, the public comments that speak to the event that happened over the weekend. It was very well organized. The volunteer coordinator, or sorry, the, the individual who is responsible for the majority of the coordination is an intern, and I think that individual definitely deserves some accolades and, and some praise for helping to keep this whole thing going.
Absolutely.
It was a wonderful event, and it seemed like the community enjoyed it. Back to, to our ask. I'm hoping the council had an opportunity to look at a couple of the slides that we included with our request. The, the reason we are asking for assistance is unfortunately, the way the American Rescue Plan funding was, was delivered throughout the country. Unfortunately, special districts were left out of this. And special districts on the West Coast are fairly unique compared to the way most other government organizations are run nationally. And that kind of left us in a pickle, especially with us being on the front lines. And we, we had our, our fire associations and EMS associations lobbying the state. And the state basically said, you need to go local. We're not going to provide any assistance. When we approached the county, the county pretty much is in the same boat. They, they said, you need to go local. We, you know, they're, they're taking tons of requests. And so, after exhausting all avenues, we are here before the council asking for assistance to receive some funding so we can purchase a piece of equipment that is going to service the needs of our community. And, and basically, what we're asking for is, is funding for a replacement of an ambulance. If you would like me to go through each slide, I'd be more than happy to. So, not sure if everybody in our community understands, but with there not being a hospital, we are the way that most people who call 911 get from their home or a place of injury to the hospital. And that, that's a very important service that our community has and, and we continue to provide. What we found through our statistical data is about 80% of all of the calls that we receive for the fire district come from the city of, of Scappu's, not necessarily the outerlying areas. Another reason why we feel this is a reasonable ask of the council. But the thing that really hurts us the most is we have to write off over $1 million a year in ambulance receipts. And a lot of that is because of our contractual obligations with Medicare and Medicaid. And essentially, those contracts say that if the federal government is going to pay us for these transports that we do to the hospital, we are not able to bill the remainder of whatever amount is left after what the federal government pays. Right now, the going rate is, they pay us 25% of the cost of doing business. And to give you an example, it's $2,000 essentially to do a run from Scappu's to Portland. So, when you factor in, we're only getting 25% of that, that's, that's pretty significant. Our other big challenge is we're trying to do more with less. And, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to play catch-up on, and that's why that last bullet point is there. 50% of our fleet is over 25 years. Thankfully, our ambulances are not at that age. But we are trying to desperately save so that we don't have to go to the taxpayers and ask them for more money every time we need to purchase a piece of equipment. So, you know, those are some, some specific statistics. The current ambulance that we need to replace has about 200,000 miles on it. And as a result of its age and the amount of wear and tear that we've had to put on it recently, with, with the pandemic, we're running into significant challenges with maintenance. We just had to repair the sway bars on, on the vehicle for the third time in four months. And the amount of abuse that this ambulance has received as a result of the constant decontamination from transporting COVID patients or suspected COVID patients is, is definitely starting to take a toll. So, you know, once we realized this and we heard about the, the American Rescue Plan funding, we decided, well, you know, we have to do something. So, again, that's why we're reaching out. If we could go to the next slide, please. So, new ambulance, they cost about $275,000. We're not expecting the council to, to help us with that whole amount. We have been putting money away. But we do need help, and we feel that if we could receive $200,000 of this American Rescue Plan funding, it would be sufficient enough to get us over the hump of what we need to do to, to get this ambulance. One of our challenges is trying to put an order in sooner than later because, as everybody knows, with the supply chain challenges, ambulances are about two years out. Maybe a year and a half. It just depends on the vendor. So, our hope is that if we can get a commitment from the city, we can go ahead to start putting money down on something so we can get the ball rolling, so we're not, we're not behind the eight ball. Next slide, please.
A clarifying question.
Yes.
Does the $275,000 include, like, the, the package that you pay for after to get it all equipped for you? Or is that just the base price of the ambulance? And then, on top of that, you're going to need to pay additional costs to have it all outfitted for your needs? Just curious.
Great question. We generally wrap the large, hard costs into an ambulance. A lot of that is the, the cot. The cots that we are required to have now, all new ambulances have to have the power assist or power lift cots. And those are about $30,000 just for the system to get the patient into the back of the ambulance. And then, there's a couple other hard, good things, you know, like breathing machines and suction devices. But this, that's what makes up the majority of the cost. If you were to just buy the ambulance itself, you're looking at about $200, $220,000, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, the tax measure you just passed, didn't that have an ambulance in that, in the, in the budget?
Well, we, we are definitely budgeting for replacing equipment. But the majority of that levy was to add three additional staff so that we can provide 24-hour-a-day coverage for our community. So, to, to answer your question, yes, there is money in there that goes to the ambulance. But with the American Rescue Plan funds, you know, sort of COVID-related, our hope was that we could use some of that stimulus money from the federal government so that we can start working on other equipment replacement items that we need to take care of as well.
But you initially got that passed, right?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I think, I think we pretty much covered that. I think this is the last slide. And I think everything pretty much has been, been covered with what I've presented so far. So, I guess if, if council has any questions or would like more statistical data, I do have some pulled up, so I could probably shoot that off. But I do appreciate your, your time to let me speak before you this evening.
I have a follow-up question unrelated to the ambulance. But in the document that we received in terms of it outlining what we can and cannot use these funds for, one of them was supporting the public health response. And there's a bullet point that says services and programs to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID-19, including. And one of those bullet points is PPE purchases. You're out there on the front line. In your opinion, do you feel like, whether it's the fire district, or the county, or the city, that that is something that we should be proactively purchasing? I mean, this pandemic is not over. I'm just not quite sure if that's something that you guys are prepared for, or if the county is using some of their money to give us. I'm not, I, I don't know the ins and outs of that. But in my opinion, I feel like having some of those purchases made now, you're talking about backup in, in receiving equipment and supplies. And this pandemic isn't going away tomorrow. So, that's just kind of a rhetorical question for whomever maybe has an answer.
Well, I, I can take a stab at that. PPE is very important to the fire district, especially with COVID patients. We, we actually go above and beyond what the CDC requires because we're concerned about the safety of our, and health of our employees in addition to their families. I, I can say that we have been very successful as a result of our PPE requirements. We've only had some cautionary COVID quarantines, and we haven't really had any of our staff get COVID as a result of the work that they do. So, with PPE, we took advantage of the CARES funding. And when those funds were available, we did purchase additional PPE and respirators. A lot of people were purchasing N95 masks. And we went out and we did P100s, which is a level above, and they're also reusable. So, we, we definitely have a good cache of equipment that is, wouldn't say at our disposal, but for our use for the foreseeable future.
You feel that would get you through this, you know, quote-unquote flu season, which things might be spiking up?
Absolutely.
Going back to work and school? Okay.
Yep.
As a city, I don't know if we assessed what we have or what we need for employees or different...
Pretty well-stocked. And when I actually, you know, when I went through to Jill and, you know, various department heads, that actually didn't come up. So, you know, I voiced kind of their, their thoughts on this, so.
Long as we all feel like we're covered.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Pritchard.
Mr. Vogel. Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me appear tonight. I would like to echo the congratulations on the events this weekend. I was out here a couple of times. It was blistering hot, as you all know. And the vendors that were here and the performers that were here are a testament to their commitment to that event in the community. The people who showed up are a testament to the commitment to the community. So, thank you for persevering. Thank you for putting together a great event. And thank you really for the, to the community for making it successful in spite of a lot of challenges that came up right at the end. If I could just address the PPE question for a second. We, we fell into the PPE business last year because there was really no one to stand up a small business side of that. I can, I, I'm not ratting anybody out, but there's a Connex at the county that's probably got 80,000 or 90,000 masks in it that we still go and pick up and take to some small businesses. So, if you're looking for masks, some of that still exists. And, and that, that all came from the state. They're happy to share, so.
Thank you.
Leftovers from being in the PPE business. Excuse me. I'm the executive director of the Columbia Economic Team, and I'm here not on behalf of the economic team, but really on behalf of your small businesses and the small businesses around the county, about 1,460 of them. We put a lot of info into the plan, I believe you have, and also into summary document addressing more specifically the city of Scappu's. I've been living this for several months, and I could go into all kinds of detail. I'm going to try not to do that and just give you a bit of a framework of, of our request. Didn't do as nice a job on slides as Chief Pritchard. And then, just let you ask questions that are of particular interest to you. The bottom line is, we're here to request $25,000 investment from your ARPA funds. And $25,000 will leverage, help leverage 675,000 other dollars for the four-year startup phase of a small business resource center, the first ever in Columbia County. Never had one here. We should have had one here. Nearly every other county in the state has one. And never have we needed one more than last year and now in recovery. Columbia Economic Team, partially of our own initiative, partially by being asked, stepped into a number of gaps when it came to small business. Going through four rounds of grant funding, it's, we can, we can administer grant programs, but we're not business advisors. And small businesses here last year needed business advisors. Small businesses 10 years ago needed business advisors. And small businesses, particularly those adapting their business to recover, which is what these funds are all about, is resilience and recovery, they need business advisors. This Small Business Resource Center would provide free business counseling to any small business in Columbia County. It's got workshops tied into the Oregon Small Business Development Center network, software, training materials, all of the tools available to every other SBDC in the state of Oregon. The difference being, this one would be a hybrid. This one will be local, a standalone tied into the SBC DC network, and it will have a local director and advisor, not somebody assigned from Salem or Eugene or wherever OSBDCN is. We have a growing, we, we not only have a disrupted county due to the pandemic, but we have a growing county. Nobody knows that more than the city of Scappu's, which Friday, we learned, 21% increase in population. With that has come and needs to come growth in business, goods and services. Recovery is underway. Business landscape has changed. We need to be able to provide business counseling, business advice, business expertise, and business networking for our small businesses in Columbia County. The other thing that has changed besides the business landscape is the relationship landscape that is allowing us to actually put this together. Everywhere else in Oregon, the small business development centers are attached to the community college in their area. PCC has served Columbia County from afar. If you wanted to go see a business counselor, you went to Lloyd Center. The landscape changing in the pandemic, meeting those folks, we were able to kind of get them to admit that model has not worked. PCC SBDC has been a tremendous partner in supporting a hybrid concept of a local small business resource center in Columbia County. It got us connected to the Oregon Small Business Development Center network, which resultingly got us included in their budget, got us a legislative allocation that is biennium, biennium, biennium into perpetuity, and also got us locked into their network so that we have all their training. and also got us locked into their network so that we have all their training, all their systems, all their protocols, all their resources, all their software program resources, as well as the network that we can make referrals to and bring people in, and their expertise and workshops and and that sort of thing. The landscape changed as far as the relationships because we we had the opportunity to make good use of a crisis to change those relationships, and that's what we have here. So really, what this has turned, what this started as was is an SBRC, a Small Business Resource Center. It still will be, but it will have a Small Business Development Center inside it. That's important because an SBDC is Small Business Administration designation. That gives us access to more funding over time, additional programs. It gives us preference in the federal system and all that. So they liked our plan well enough. They did two things. One, they invited us in. We're the first new SBDC in, I think, 10 years. And they also took our plan and are trying to make it work in three or four other places in the state because they realized that the landscape has changed. So we've got good relationships in place, and they bring funding with them. Congresswoman Bonamici put in an earmark for 175,000. She used to back up. Our $25,000 request is against a $700,000 four-year startup plan. 175,000 earmark has made it all the way through the House of Representatives and simply waiting for the Senate to approve that bill or to or to to pass a reconciliation bill on that. That leaves us $150,000 short after OSBDCN money, to the congressional money, and we need local match. And that's where we are, is the $150,000. So we are approaching every city in Columbia County. We're approaching the county and asking for a small share of your ARPA money to help support into perpetuity, small business, not just the small businesses here now, but the small businesses you want here in 10 years, 20 years, and 30 years. Set this thing up on a four-year path that in, that gives it a chance to succeed because funding it for a year makes no sense. Two years, you're probably just starting to get traction. We have it for four years. That's an adequate amount of time for a startup to succeed. And you start year two developing your ongoing long-term funding basis. And where you, and and you use the statistics, the metrics that you're driving with your visitations, your counseling, pursue other funding through EDA, USDA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I forgot, I should toss in, they, we did get a federal grant of $75,000 to research the feasibility of this. We forgot about that, so we went ahead and did it anyway. So we're putting our $75,000 into this as well. So that's, some of you I know are good at math, so you probably tried to walk that back and figure out what we were missing. Anyway, we were, we're approaching each city and the county, asking for a small share of the ARPA money as an investment in preparing a resilient business community and a dynamic business community, not not just to be ready, not not just to help recover from this pandemic, not just to be ready for the next, frankly, to be creative and grow and and provide stronger small business sector of our balanced economy. I'll shut up and see if there are any questions.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vogel, so being you're speaking all of the cities in Columbia County, right?
Yes, sir.
What's the total?
In the aggregate, we're trying to fill a $150,000 gap. We, we're kind of leaving it a little open ended. St. Helens, for example, just voted, just approved $50,000. And that's a number they came up on their staff. And talking with with city staff here, we talked about a range. And I kind of settled on the $25,000. Honestly, we will take what we can get. We, we need to provide a local match because that helps us leverage more federal money. If we, if we don't fill the whole 150, we're going to have to go someplace else. But each of the smaller cities is in for, we're asking them for about $10,000. And the county, and we haven't got full word on this, the county, it looks like they're going to redirect $30,000 or about $31,000 our way.
You've worked through all of this with one.
I'm sorry? Oh, yes. Oh, yes. And we're meeting with her on, we're meeting with her on Wednesday again and asking her why she hasn't made the Senate vote yet.
I would want a little bit of time.
Oh, yeah, just look at this.
I just have a follow up, a couple of follow up questions. Counselor Hagen kind of got on track there. Have you had firm responses? So you're saying from the county, St. Helens? And have you had firm responses from those that you've asked 10,000 from?
I've only been to Vernonia, and they've told me how they're, how they're going to schedule it out, but I haven't gotten confirmation yet.
Okay. And then where will this Resource Center be housed?
Is a great question. Geographically, we're thinking more the center of the county, just so that more easily accessed from the north and the south. But we're not, we're not completely set. We've, we've had conversations with the county, approached us about putting, putting it in the John Gumm Building and combining lots of small business services in the John Gumm Building. Right now, if we're, my city council visits culminate the middle of September. We ought to, we hope to be able to actually announce that this thing is done and start hiring by the middle of September. We won't have a place by then, so we'll probably share offices in, in, share with them our offices in the St. Helens Library for the time being. That's not adequate. But we don't know for certain yet. What we do know is that there are time-tested criteria and guidelines for where to establish something like this. It needs to be, it needs to offer confidentiality, anonymity, and that means people are self-conscious about going and getting business coaching and that sort of thing. They need to be able to be unobtrusive. And and we need to take that into consideration for where it is located and what type of building it is and all of that. But right now, we're focused, we have a number of options that have been offered to us. We're principally focused about getting it, getting it set up so we have something to put there.
Thank you. Peter.
Yeah, Alex and I had a lot of time with the fire department's request, and we were able to get a lot of things answered. And really kind of, I get a lot of information from the chief. Had less time with this. We're talking about a four-year period. There are time limitations as far as how money can be, how how quickly we need to spend the money and.
Oh, sure. Yeah. The, the four-year startup is, is for the, for the center itself. We can use, any, any funds we can get that, that have a, have a time fuse on them, we'll use first.
Right. And so I think anytime we're talking about pools of, pools of state funds and federal funds, which some of which have restricted purposes and some don't, and some provide a match and some don't. And there's certain amounts of transparency that perhaps need to happen or sometimes it becomes, it just is necessary to take a little bit of time and make sure we really have a understand, a full understanding of exactly where the money will go to. And so I haven't had, really had that opportunity to kind of understand this. I did have some, in Clatsop County, and it mentioned Cedar and their work. And that's something too that took a little bit of time to understand as far as this pool of grant funds can go for this, and this can go for that, and and just getting that sort of information. So and it sounds like this is contingent on $150,000 federal earmark and some other funds as well. Though maybe we have a little bit of time.
Couldn't we prove a contingent on it beating the muster?
I mean, you could put it, make a contingent on any number of things, but, but yeah, I just.
It meets the legal standard.
Walk, I, because we've gotten a lot of information, and there are a lot of acronyms and a lot of different grant pools. I just want to make sure that we understand exactly how. Because what I've seen from the public in other cities where they've testified about the grants is that, and we haven't gotten that sort of public testimony. We've had some written, but not public, is kind of a need for transparency and a need to be able to explain to them, you know, how we're being really prudent stewards of that money, which is not at all to suggest that this isn't just an amazing program. It's just a matter of understanding where money's coming from and how it kind of fits together so that that can be articulated. This is a, this, you know, for even lawyers, you know, as we, as we read through these sort of things, we're like, hmm, how does, how does this lever that? And so I think it's a getting, getting, just making sure that we're well within the parameters. Business development is one of the parameters, just like healthcare, just like, you know, the water meters would be. But it's, it's helping understand exactly how this all works together.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, if it would be helpful, we have a letter of commitment from the Oregon State, Oregon Small Business Development Center Network. So essentially, a written commitment, now that the funding has been approved, we're simply waiting on that agreement. But we, we do also have in our hands now a draft contract with the Small Business Administration. And be more than happy to share those documents. And and frankly, if it would help, put you in touch with the OSBDCN Director and and whoever might be useful to. Because they, one of the things I really like about actually being part of the network is the discipline, the protocols, the procedures, the metrics that are in place to hold, hold you accountability and and to provide that transparency. So I'd be more than happy to make whatever resources or people available that you would like.
That'd be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
I certainly not opposed this. It sounds like a really good idea, but there's a piece missing, the way I think. I don't always think like everybody else, but people benefiting from this product or this, are the small businesses. And all we're hearing from are government agencies. Where are the small businesses to say, hey, we need this in our community? It seems like we're, we're missing a step here somewhere.
I have.
Maybe I'm all wrong, I don't know, but.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Counsel.
Yeah, but I'm done.
I have two USB devices on my desk full of emails from small businesses last year asking for things that we couldn't give them. We couldn't help them. Small businesses are asking for this, and small businesses need it. If you compare Cedar in Clatsop County, I think they worked extensively with somewhere between 300 and 400 small businesses just in 2020. Small Business Development Center assigned to Columbia County last year, eight. So there's need. Ask small businesses. They, they need this, and they particularly need it when they're trying to figure out a disruptive situation. But if you start looking at the folks who are starting to take small business classes through PCC and other places, there, there is definitely a need. And the small business failure rate is the strongest vote in favor of having something where people can actually go to get help. Because right now, if you live in Scappus and you're a small business person, you got to figure it out yourself. Go find somebody else or hire the help. And if you're a small business person and you're not even paying yourself a salary yet, that's, that's pretty tough to do. So I feel pretty passionately that there's a need because I worked with an awful lot of businesses that I couldn't do enough for last year.
My suggestion is that you include that as part of your presentation because I think that's really important to know that there is a need there and the small businesses themselves are identifying the need. It's not just a government, you know, we're going to provide this. We don't know if there's really a need there or not.
Oh, you, you make a very good point. And and I tend to be, I'm trying to get this set up fast. And so I'm trying to be opportunistic about the types of funds that are available now that haven't ever been before. Your, your point is very well taken.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Oh, I'd be curious. So the 36 counties across Oregon, Columbia County does not have a small business. The DC or RC.
Right.
How many other counties do not have that same resource available to our small businesses, which are the engine of our economy?
To my knowledge, there are three, and their county is under 2,000 residents.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your presentation, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. You know, one thing is, having served time on the board of the chamber, I, I know there's a need. I know that there's a frustration with business owners, small business owners that are looking for help, that the nearest help would be Portland. So they have to drive into Portland. It's an hour drive, a couple hours in the meeting.
Who's driving the Uber? Takes you an hour?
I drive safely and within the speed limit and follow local and city state laws when it comes to driving my Uber. But it includes finding parking, and Portland's wonderful traffic nowadays. But, you know, that's a half a day where they can't work. And then if they, they have to go for follow-ups, being able to cut that commute time. And Cam Polkerson's right in the middle of the county, I'm kidding. Oh, it is.
I'll make a note.
But no, I do know during my time with the chamber, that was definitely one of the needs that the chamber constantly, constantly was working on is trying to find ways to bring that service, those services out here. And that organization was on a shoestring budget, so it made it difficult. So having a county-wide organization be able to step in that role would be great.
I just want to clarify that we're, we are going to make this contingent upon legal counsel's review and approval. Okay, thank you.
Counselor.
One other thing, I just wanted to, I, I can attest that there are. I can attest, I think that.
There is a, there is a big need in, for small businesses to have some sort of Resource Center. I think that you'll see a big use out of it, especially as that's an area that we definitely want to grow. My one hesitation and concern that I would have is that there would be some sort of stipulation that says these funds have to be used for that going forward, just because there's so many moving parts to this and so many different funding sources that are making this actually happen. I just want to make sure that we're headed in that right direction too, so.
So do we. Honestly, and we, we actually, in anticipation of this, so that we could make it happen, we, we've set up a completely different chart of accounts for this. And the, again, back to the rigor of being in the Small Business Network and because their relationship with, with the SBA and its official designation, everything, it's not a full-on audit, but it is, but, but all reimbursements from them are reviewed, and they go through, they go through audit and accreditation every three years. So we, we share, share the interests, and we want to keep it completely separate because frankly, having a, having a small business expert and director doing outreach as well as the advising allow us to do more of the business retention, expansion, and the recruitment and and those sorts of things that, that the economic team is supposed to be doing. A great partnership. Completely separate.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
Okay. Questioned on the premium pay for police officers. What would the average bump in salaries be for officers during, for that premium pay period?
Okay, so during the premium period, something we can't.
And then I just want to clarify, we are doing COVID bonuses in the amount of $175,000 to employees. That would include the staff in the police department. So I just want to thank you and Norm for recognizing not only that funding should be given in, in the amount of these bonuses to all staff, but that specifically our patrol officers and command staff in the police department do deserve more. And if we can provide that, I'm fully in support of that. So thank you for acknowledging them.
Counselor Solsky.
But tonight I am not willing to uh, I would prefer to defer this decision and I would like to make that uh out, bring that out right now. Um a few things is regards to, and this is just more about how we describe it, employee COVID bonuses, I would look at this as a hazard pay. Um it was not a bonus for those staff that were having to come in during this particular time. And so I I think that we need to highlight it for what it is. And in doing so, I would actually ask the city staff, look at how the state of Oregon is allocating uh hazard pay for those that did work during the COVID pandemic. I would also recognize that this would be for both hourly represented employees. I would also recommend that it goes to interns that have or a certain threshold of hours that they've contributed uh during that time. So I would recommend again to interim city manager Reins to look at the state's criteria. Five thousand dollars is a big portion of money for a one time payout, so I want to make sure that it's representative, represents uh current trends. In regards to the premium pay for the patrol officers and command staff, my interpretation here is that this would be. Paid to them outside of their hourly wage, is that correct? Sure, I just I get my understanding is for uh represented uh police patrol staff. Would do they have step increases as part of their pay? And I would. So I would like to see more information on how that would be delivered uh as part of the MOU to the CBA or the amendment to the CBA between the uh the officers and.
Sure. So um this kind of this is consistent with uh what Counselor Solsky was saying too um. In regards to the hazard A two, I just want to make sure that we have legal counsel involved with that too, because I don't want to trigger other things with classifying. Things as hazard pay and then there could be other triggers along with that on the legal side too, I would imagine. How many unions does the city have across? Okay, so my other concern would be too is that. If this is going to be considered wages, you know, obviously the wages that are paid to city employees regardless of classification is all part of collective bargaining. So I would just be concerned that we're not starting or not setting a precedence to and we're not going to create a situation where. Um you know, other classifications are going to come back also wanting the same pay increase because obviously those. The pay that different classifications get is all art of compensation studies that they bring into the table during the CD. Uh negotiations, so I just want to make sure that we're touching all those bases and we're um maybe talk to those other the other union too to make sure that there's an MOU in place where. Um they're not going to take issue with this, I don't I'm I'm thinking just very far ahead about all the implications that this could potentially have. And it's I I my guess is how this is classified is going to perhaps make a lot of difference too. And then if the. Intent here is to attract and retain, well, attract recruiting purposes too. I would also be interested in seeing how that's going to look, how that's going to be messaged to potential applicants. And the other thing that is, I think this is in line with what their counselors are saying, but also seeing the percentage. The percentages that these different persons, again, I just see lump sums here, so I think it'd be good to see the actual percentages that are going to go to different classifications and why.
Thank you. Counselor McKeel.
Again, I'm coming at a little different point of view here, uh first of all, I it's something disingenuous about having the city staff recommend their own bonuses. It just doesn't quite add up to me when we do that, uh and I agree with uh. Counselor Lebrowski that we need to maybe defer this, I'm not against that necessarily, but. There's a lot out there in this community that have suffered a lot more uh from this than what our city staff has. And I'm not trying to be negative, I love our staff, but you know, what about our restaurants and uh uh in. Most of our buildings were closed during this pandemic, so they weren't really facing the public that much. Police officers, that's a little different story, uh but uh I don't know, I just, I think. That recommendation could come from a broader group than just staff. And uh I would like to see. Maybe a committee that includes a couple council members, maybe a couple citizens, we would take a look at that and. Me, it's just a lot better to have a broader base looking at incentive, quite a bit of money, we're talking about a million six or something like that, so. I think we need to look at that, I don't really have any disagreements on anything. A little bit of problem with the five thousand dollars for each of our employees, uh and I'm not sure that. I mean, the checkers at the grocery store have a lot more contact with the public than what our city employees have. So I don't know, yeah, again, I'm kind of coming out from a different point of view, but I'm the one that's going to have to fend that to the public. It does not look good to the city to recommend their own bonuses. I think it should come from a broader group of staff members or of the public and council. That's my take.
Counselor.
I'm going to side with Counselor Solsky at the uh, I'm not ready to move ahead of it this this evening. Um I think we've got a lot of issues, Pete Pete brings up a really good point too about the optics. About the optics of this and you know, so um and and we like we have uh Paul Fedrich sitting here this evening. Uh a a successful businessman and a really smart guy who just volunteered just an incredible amount of time for a successful centennial event. And I'm sure he might even step forward to uh if there was going to be some kind of outside uh aspect to this. So um and another thing I would like to look at is a kind of a comparative stability issue with our what not our compensation for our our police department. Uh and and turnover, so can we find some communities where there's a a stable police force? Uh and then look at their compensation, what they're doing right. And so let's see if we don't, we don't have to recreate the wheel, um and we can we can study things that uh that are are successful because we we obviously have some issues here. So uh definitely not ready to move forward, but uh uh basic outline looks looks positive, uh but I think we need to dig a little deeper.
Counselor President.
I actually have a question for Paul. Well, hi. Um throughout this pandemic, have you seen? Small, large box stores, any kind of business, restaurants, et cetera, you heard or seen them offering? Um I wouldn't want to call it a bonus, you could call it hazard pay, you could call it um. Stick with us through the pandemic, have you seen other groups, I want to call them jurisdictions or agencies, but other. Businesses, I guess we are a business, um offer some sort of compensation to their employees throughout the pandemic?
I think uh during during the heart of the pandemic, less of that because businesses were trying to marshal their PPP. Money, um and so. What they were trying to do is incentives more often than not was be flexible in shifts and change their open hours and that sort of thing because they were dealing with. With uh not only lockdown, but also childcare issues and no school and all of that, so there wasn't as much incentive at at that time. Um as we've kind of, doesn't feel like we've pulled out of it, but as we we've been pulling out of it. Uh most of the incentive I've seen has been for hiring new hires. And it's only working with limited success, so I I've heard I've heard some I've heard some bonus saying and and particularly folks who kind of went above and beyond. Because they because they stuck with, uh but not as much from small businesses because they because their revenue reduction. Didn't really give them reserves and they're and they're they're just trying to pace it or. And and just just hang on to folks and and hire folks. Um so not as much, more more um bit more on the corporate side. Folks uh folks who had to come into the office and work longer hours, IT folks, but typically businesses of fifty and more.
How about grocery stores?
Um no, I haven't really had a lot of contact, particularly with the big boxes.
Sure.
I you know, only what I've read that you probably read. Um in in terms of that and and I've seen some in national press, I just haven't run into it as much with the smaller businesses and you know, what sixty percent? Our businesses here are three or few people, so. Uh not a lot, not giving I'm not giving you much of an answer, it's more just anecdotal, but.
I was just curious across the county, thank you. So my parents own a small business, they have um three employees in addition to themselves and luckily that business was. Something that people continued to invest in and purchase throughout the pandemic and they um. It was very important to them that they saved their three employees that they have and know that they're valued and coming to work every day and having to interact with hundreds of customers every day. Um again, a business that people continued to purchase into throughout the pandemic. And um my parents personally took a hit because they felt it was more important. To their three employees that they received a couple hundred dollars every month extra, making sure that they were not only feeding themselves healthy food so they could show up to work every day. That they didn't have to worry about, um they were guaranteed or had reassurance that we're here for you, we're not letting you go, stick with us during all of this. Now, I know that not all business owners or companies um had that luxury, I know that some stores have offered. Incentives or bonuses to to their employees. I I find it a little um. I think assumptions are being made that. The staff is saying, oh, there's free money, I think that you should pay us extra because we worked during the pandemic and it follows follows one of these bullet points. You know, I'd love to hear from Alex who runs the company that we support. Because I bet if we listen to how this happened, it wasn't people knocking on the door begging for free money. I bet that maybe Alex wanted to acknowledge the staff that works for us. And show as a business owner or someone who runs a company like she does for us that. It's a a way to show gratitude for carrying us through this time. Yeah, and I just.
I Peter, before, I just wanted to remind everyone that last winter, December. As the restaurants all got re-shut down, we were in the process of putting putting out grants, working with CCT, in fact, and putting out grants and gave, I believe, six or seven. Possibly eight restaurants, five thousand dollars that are in our community grant money, so we have during the time we have done. That at one point already to support support our local restaurants, Peter.
So this is something that Alex and I, of course, I I actually read the treasury regulations or it's about thirty pages in length in order to. Because now we have some more guidance, but initially around things like the ambulance, I really wanted to make sure that. I had a thorough understanding of how they use the equipment and that that fit in and and I'm I'm quite comfortable now, particularly given all the wear and tear. Um that the the heavy disinfecting that they were doing to it, um this is something that I think I had brought up with Alex because I've seen it in other jurisdictions and um. It's an acknowledgement that uh working in many respects. The way that we worked pre-pandemic, if we had a land use application that was complex or something like that, something like the airport development, is we all get in the same room. We would go around the table and we kind of talked through all the issues and so we started trying to do that via Zoom, which was. It's more challenging when you have four or five people on and then it was. Realizing that the number of applications that Laurie and Chris and Alex and everyone else were processing was increasing. So at a at a time where um it was harder to work because of some lack of efficiency. Compared to how we normally do, or they'd all be in the same room and I'd be on the conference call, that that happens sometimes too. That we were um expecting more of them and um. I mean, if you look at the number of permits that you guys have seen the population estimate, so you can guess what's been happening here. Um but just the amount of time that staff was doing. It seemed like their workload was increasing at a um at the same time as as we had some inefficiencies through no fault of our own, through the governor's orders. And I had just I had seen this in some other jurisdictions and I thought it might be a. A good way to show appreciation for the fact that our staff is around the same size that it was. Eight years ago, but the number of applications that they're processing and the complexity of the issues that we're dealing with. Are not at all similar to what we were dealing with when I first came to Scappus. Um many years ago, but mayor, of course, remembers what those are some different issues, but they weren't, it wasn't processing, you know, tens of. Building permit applications or subdivisions or things of that nature, so I I. I think you should probably blame me, I am not an employee, so I would not be getting this bonus, but I have a deep appreciation of your employees and and I I think I recommended it. Um as far as the water infrastructure goes, uh that is something I'm incredibly comfortable with. It really that that resiliency type of stuff is specifically called out in the so any improvements to water and sewer, things of that nature. Um I think that. There were some ideas that we came up with that I wasn't, I wasn't as um comfortable with just because of the information we had, the guidance we had. Initially was somewhat ambiguous and it's it's like um the issue with the the fire department, when the. Initial guidance came out, it was less specific and so I was trying to figure out, okay, does this work and then as they released more and more data, it became more and more apparent that, yeah, this was particularly given their use. Um so those those that's kind of the a little background on how we got to where we got. Um but again, I I don't think I don't think it was staff that recommended that, I I think I suggested.
I'm sorry, I knew what I said wouldn't be popular, I was pretty sure of that.
You can always blame the lawyer.
Uh I I do think that it does not look good to the public or the staff to recommend that they get bonuses. Uh and that's what this is a staff recommendation and I think it should come from a broader base than just the staff and. Uh and I think if you look at the criteria that's given to us in this this uh formation that we were given, I'm not sure that really fits. Uh maybe a little bit what Peter said might might add in there somewhere, but of course, a lot of those things came over a longer period of time than the COVID. Uh I'm not saying it shouldn't happen, but I just think it doesn't look good for the staff to recommend bonuses for themselves. That's my take on it.
That's what we said, look, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Oh, yeah, so I think that uh uh our interim city manager during this meeting here tonight has so that she would. Or go accepting the bonus, if that's what it meant.
Mr. Mayor.
And the second thing is, and I just wanted to point out, uh I look on the staff report, that's why it came from not only Alexandra Reins, but myself. As a recommendation to the council, not just from staff, but for for me who had gone through this as well as everyone up sitting up here.
You'll need a broader base than that, I think.
Mr. Mayor. Um he I I I see where you're coming from, um you know, a visibility, obviously, on things, um I will, I do respectfully disagree with you, I think that. As a, you know, manager of a business or a somebody who runs a business, you want to do things for your employees and uh if you have the opportunity to. Um acknowledge them and and are able to give them some sort of um acknowledgement that they're doing a good job by giving them some sort of bonus. Um I think as as that side of it, that's the side of it I see, so.
So I do think that there are some questions that we were asking to have answered. So, I mean, either way, I don't know. I don't have a problem deferring this to the next meeting so we can have the follow-up issues that we brought up answered, if that's okay with staff or council.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hoggan.
Well, I was just thinking we have an opportunity here this evening with our, with our, our, uh, audience. Got, uh, at least three business people in here. And, um, so I'm wondering if we could just kind of take on, take a, a natural pulse.
No.
Not tonight, no, because we're at eight thirty and we still have another i- items on the agenda.
Yeah. No pulse tonight?
No.
Not, not right now, no. So, um.
We can just ask for a show of hands. I think it's a good idea.
I have a follow-up question. Um, do we need to, do we need to submit anything anywhere by a certain date that shows what we're spending it on and I know there's. Great. Okay. Sure. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, may I, uh, make just a, I just want to throw this out there. What if we just added another category that fit under the provide premium pay for essential workers? Where we could potentially include some of those other essential workers outside of the city? Would that be a compromise that? Just looking for a happy medium beer on this.
Can you describe what other essential workers you would put on that list?
Um, well, I, I don't, I don't have anything specific in mind. I'm just trying to basically say that maybe we just add another category to where it gives us a little more flexibility to disperse some of these funds to whatever we deem as classifying, um, essential workers.
Well, I, there's a classification in there.
Yeah, and I ha- I did have a question on the definition of that too, is the essential workers, is that for government? Floyd essential workers or is that basically any essential workers and what, what is the definition of that?
Peter.
So it's, it's pretty broad, but yeah, it's, it's workers that had to perform their work during COVID because, um, it was necessary essentially for government to function. Um, and it, the, this, it, it's kind of presented as a, as a lump sum amount, but it's, it's far more complicated than that. It, what you would be doing is basically greenlighting us to have the first conversations with the union because this isn't like a private business where it's just a five thousand dollar check, uh, bonus or five thousand you withhold. It's your, there's an amount of it that needs to go into their purse account. There's an amount that needs to be, it's outside of the collective bargaining agreement, so they need to sign off on it and they need able to message it to their employees in a way that's fair. I have been able to do this in ju- other jurisdictions, do a one-time bonus, but it's not as if it's just cutting a check. I mean, so what, what this would be, would be the, the start of a conversation to figure out what it would look like. Um, and, and that would need to be done in collaboration with their union. Um, because in instances where just you hand a check to people, it does not go well at all. So, um, this, yeah, this, this would be the, the first step to a longer conversation. The actual amount that they would receive in their pocket, I don't know what it would be. It wouldn't be five thousand though, because you'd have to do, um, and depending on their classification, whether it's tier one, tier two, or the other purs, eh, the amounts are all different. Um, so this, if you want to, if you want to go in this direction, we'd need to start those conversations. Um, if you don't want to go into that direction, I'd rather not start the conversation because I don't want to raise the specter that folks are going to get a bonus and then say, sorry, we, we're just kidding. Um, because then that really can impact employee morale. Um, and then also upset the union because they've been negotiating with you in good faith and then, you know, you take the money off the table. So, um, which isn't to say it's a final decision and, and I, that would be part of the conversation I'd have. I just want to, we just, there are a bunch more steps that we need to have.
So does council agree that we'll just go ahead and defer this to the next council meeting?
Next council meeting, but is it the same? There going to be any meetings in between to talk about this or we're just going to think about it for a couple of weeks and then get back together? And, uh, uh, is there going to be asked to subcommittee, look at it or anything like that, or is that even appropriate?
I look to our city manager as the leader of the city and the staff to propose that to us as council, and I think that we've asked that there be more details being proposed and brought back to us. That I, I don't foresee us having enough of a time period to solicit volunteers to set up a subcommittee. I don't know if legally we can create a subcommittee of council to work with city manager to create that recommendation.
I also wanted to acknowledge a- again, that the mayor's name was, was on this, and I think it, it meant a lot to you that it wasn't just coming from one person, that it was something that you backed as well. And so, thank you for doing that.
I, it just, you know, I mean, I've seen, you know, staff members have been showing up every single day during a time where we didn't know what was going on. Before we had the dividers up, before we even closed the city council or the city offices. And a lot of staff still had to go out into the public and work. Our police officers, number one, were out there on the front lines over the last eighteen months. You know.
I see that.
Yeah.
I, I acknowledge.
You know, the, the small businesses and recognizing that we have put, you know, probably fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in grants into this community just with monies that the city received, not including monies that C C E T received through the county and put into this city through grant programs for our small businesses. You know, I think that, uh, saying a little thank you to our, our staff members who have been out there is a great way. I, my concern is timelines. My concern is, you know, most of it, we're, we're literally, at this point, I think, discussing the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. No one has a problem with getting the stuff done, the fire, the two hundred thousand to the fire or the hundred thou- two hundred thousand to the fire district for a new ambulance. I mean, we're talking about whether or not we should be giving a bonus to our staff, or the members of our staff who have been out there working and, you know, starting negotiations, because like Peter said, the unions could come back and say, oh, we want this a permanent thing, then we wouldn't be able to do it. You know, there's,
What I think.
Yeah, well, there's, it could all fall apart if there's not an agreement, but at least giving them the green light to move forward. I want the questions that were asked that in these, some of these gray areas, response, that's why I'm willing to defer it to the next meeting. I don't know if what we're going to come out of with by having it studied and studied and studied. I think that the staff, we depend on our staff to provide us with good, accurate information and bring us ideas. They're kind of a subcommittee for us in a lot of ways. I mean, I don't think this is being done from a selfish perspective. I think it was, sounds like Peter recommended it. Some other communities have done it. And it seemed like a good way to reward them.
What does staff mean? Recommended by staff? That, uh, you know, probably a different configuration.
Well, this, on this one, the city manager would be the staff member that it came through with myself.
Oh, also. With the city manager?
Correct.
It says it on the front of the.
Yeah, it says on the front of the.
Report.
Yeah. What does it say there? So just the two of you came up with that?
Well.
And, and.
Now, Alex worked with staff.
Would be Alex, but you're not staff.
No, I don't get any, I don't get a dime. I've learned that a long time ago.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may just to facilitate this, I think, you know, Pete makes a, a valid point, you know, the optics of, are awkward. And, uh, so if we can just kind of think about that, um, think about those kind of elements here, maybe kind of, we can talk with Alex, we can talk with Peter and we can talk with you if you answer a phone call. Um, and, uh.
I only don't answer it with this Algen on there.
Uh, yeah, and, 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 and think about this a little bit. It's like, like the ambulance. That's the first I heard about the ambulance was tonight. And so when they get this stuff dropped on us like that, it's really hard to have, think about it, do comparative analysis, look at the kind of the economics of this and look at the bigger picture. So having the extra time, I think we can, we can, the community's going to feel better. We're going to feel better and so I.
Uh, that's, that's why I said deferring is fine. You know, the staff report, the, you know, the packet was ready, I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday, so.
Well, yeah, the ambulance, yeah, ambulance was new.
It's been in the packet since we received it.
That's the one I had.
There are two I have.
The presentation was an addition.
You know, I only had one of them. That was their.
On that page right there, it doesn't say two hundred thousand to the Scapa's Royal Fire District for an ambulance.
Well, that's the one that we got tonight.
No.
That's all right. That's no big deal. Whatever. Yeah. So we're going to go and defer to the next meeting. Um, more than willing to hear people going to email us, contact us. I don't know if, how many council members are, do, why don't we just do a motion? Can I have a motion to defer this to the next council meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Hoggan.
I move we defer this issue to the next council meeting.
Hearing a motion to defer it, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we, uh, skipped the consent agenda, just so we can keep Marissa here for a little longer. No, I'm just kidding. So we're going to go back to it real quick. Uh, tonight's consent agenda is July nineteenth work session minutes, July nineteenth city council meeting minutes, August second city council meeting minutes, reappointment of Jeanette Santiago and Brenda Michael to the Economic Development Committees and the appointment of Marissa Jacobs as a full member of the Planning Commission and the appointment of Andrew La Friends as a full member of the Parks and Recreations Committee. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I moved.
Hearing a motion from Counsel Polling, is there a second?
Yeah.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Marissa. Congratulations, Andrew. We look forward to your work. All right. Ordinance number eight nine seven, amendments to the municipal code, chapter two point zero four, council meetings. Uh, Alexandra Rains. So the first thing is it, we have it set as an ordinance amendment, so there is a public hearing. So I'll go and open the public hearing and see if there's anyone that would like to comment on municipal code, chapter two point zero four. Please step forward. Say your name and the city for the record.
Paul Fidrich, Scapa's. I had a chance to look at this as well as read the League of Oregon Cities model rules of procedure for council meetings. The one question I had was the removal of two point oh oh point oh four zero, conflicts of interest. So basically the conflict of interest states that no person will have a conflict of interest, nor will their relatives or business use be able to obtain financial gain. So this has been removed from this document. At the same time, you did many cut and paste from the League of Oregon Cities document. But the League of Oregon Cities document has the conflict of interest right here. And in fact, it was a cut and paste directly from this document, which has now been removed. My question is, why was the conflict of interest removed, especially when your stated goal was to reflect this document, which is the League of Oregon Cities, when it was already there and was cut and pasted earlier? There is an addition of two point oh four point oh three that does raise conflict of interest, but is only for voting. You might ask why I'm bringing this up. I spent the last few months on the Parks and Rec Committee and had a lot of time working with the community around the GPAHC. The biggest issue that I heard from citizens was a lack of trust between the city and the citizens. My concern is removing this wording, especially when it is in the model rules and procedure of council meetings, does not make sense. I ask to please have it put back. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, could you?
Yeah, so.
Discuss that a little bit?
What, what I did was, uh, this is again my fault. Um, under, uh, two point zero four dash zero three zero, we, um, I, I rewrote the conflict of interest. So in the event of a potential conflict of interest, councilor shall contact the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, that's O G E C. That was not in the prior one. Um, that is the state entity that is specifically tasked with making the determinations on conflicts of interest. And if there is a conflict of interest that someone reports to the state, that is the entity that is reported to and get a determination. If deemed a conflict, the councilor shall not vote. So that will be on any financial matter. If it is deemed a potential conflict of interest, the councilor shall disclose that information, um, with, and then, so under our state ethics rules, if you have a potential conflict of interest, you must disclose it. After disclosure, you can vote if you determine it. If you have a conflict of interest, then you're not allowed to participate in the hearing. Otherwise, it's an O G E C violation. The entity that makes that determination is the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So, um, what I tried to do was clarify what two point oh four oh four oh said in order to reflect the current state law and the state agency tasked with conflicts. And then I also added some language, um, in the, um, in the oh four, the new oh four oh had more to do with, um, disclosure of confidential information, things of that nature.
If I could re- respond, the two point oh four point oh three oh specifically states voting. So it could be read as if you have a conflict of interest, you cannot vote. The two point oh four point oh four oh, which is in the League of Oregon Cities, is much broader and states immediately that you should be talking about, uh, you should be raised the potential conflict of interest. My concern is, is that how it states and how it is read, specifically right now, says voting. And my concern again is just clarity with the public.
Yes, so the conflicts of interest would only come up on a matter where you would vote. Um, so just like, like bias comes up on, um, Marissa just got to hear this last week, bias only comes up on quasi judicial matters. It doesn't come up on legislative matters. Conflict of interest, potential come up on, um, could theoretically come up on both, but in any event, the way that you direct your city staff is through voting. So I, I don't know if, if you had a conflict of interest, but the council wasn't taking any action on it or potential conflict of interest, there would be nothing for you to disclose because there's no later in time action that you're voting to trigger. So I can't, I can't think of something that wouldn't. And that's why when we're in a public hearing, you know, particularly on a matter of land use or something of that nature, the mayor will specifically ask if anyone has a conflict of interest or any ex parte contacts. Um, that's in his script. Um, because it's the action by council that would trigger that, those conflict rules.
Yes, but that action is the final action. But what you stated. Yes, but that action is the final action. But what you stated is someone could have a conflict of interest, and then only at the end, when the vote was coming up, they could disclose a conflict of interest. How 2.04.040 states is that they should potentially conflict of interest should be said during the process. My concern is something could take, can be happening over months, and the conflict of interest could not be disclosed unless there was a vote at the end. Again, if you're going to be basing most of your document on the League of Oregon Cities, I suggest that you continue to do that in 2.04.040. Thank you.
Councilor Miller?
Just want to put this in a little bit simpler format, the way that I understand it, is that each of us only has about 14, 15% of a vote, and alone, none of us make a decision about anything. And so, but this is being, what's being said is that individually, if we have a conflict of interest, we, that we're voting on, and we have to declare it. And if we declare it, then we're not part of the vote. So we, we can't, we have no power individually. And so the conflict of interest piece doesn't actually come into play because we're not going to be part of the vote if we declare a conflict. Makes sense?
Yes, but the vote is the last thing. Many things, like for instance, the park issue has been going on for months. So the process on how you get to the final vote is something that the product, your, if you had a conflict of interest, it should be stated upfront, not at the end when it's time to vote. That is how I read it here. And again, it is very clear how it is stated now and how the League of Oregon Cities has stated it. I don't understand why you're removing it.
At the beginning of a public hearing, the mayor asks for people to make certain statements regarding conflict or potential conflict. The way that works practically is when the issue comes up in the packet, and you realize, like, I own a lumberyard, and we're changing our design code to require buildings to be clad in lumber. At that point, under this rule, you're required to call the Oregon Government Ethics Commission and tell them, we're changing our designer review in Scapus in order to require buildings be clad in wood. I own a lumberyard. Is that a conflict of interest? If they, they can tell you over the phone, or if you're willing to wait 24 to 48 hours, they hand you, they will send you a letter, they'll PDF it to you. At that point, when the hearing comes up, let's say they said that was a potential conflict of interest because there were three lumberyards, but there's no requirement that anyone buy it from you. So they might call that a potential one. Someone might say, is there any potential conflict of interest? You would be required to disclose it. You would, at that point, say, I contacted the OGEC for determination on this. This is the determination they made. If they made the determination that you have a actual conflict of interest, you are not allowed to participate in any portion of the hearing. You're required to recuse yourself, to leave the dais, and to join the audience. If it's a potential conflict of interest, at that point, you can make a determination yourself about whether you can objectively decide this or not. The optics, if you have a potential conflict, aren't as great if you decide to participate. But under state law, you're allowed to do it. And so that's what's reflected in this rule. I, I mean, that's, I guess that's the only way I can explain it.
So you're saying the League of Oregon Cities is actually incorrect, how they haven't stated it?
So what I'm saying is, yes, there are portions of the League of Oregon Cities model rules that I would say are not accurate, particularly in the land use section. But you know what? You guys can use whatever you want. But I, we have tried to take their 30 pages of rules that include all sorts of things, like you holding hearings about each other and your behavior, and streamline them into a shortened version that are easy for you to understand and for the general public to understand. In my mind, this conflict of interest, and I'm biased because I wrote it, that is exactly what we'd want. It highlights for you that you're supposed to contact the OGEC ahead of the hearing, which I don't think the model rule does. It highlights that you're supposed to get a determination from the OGEC about whether you can participate or not. It highlights the fact that you have to disclose that potential conflict of interest or actual conflict of interest. It highlights the fact that if it's an actual conflict of interest, you cannot participate. So again, my goal in writing this was, oh, the hearing's coming up, it's the property owner right next to mine, and they want to put a tannery there. What do I do? I call the OGEC. I get a determination, verbal or written. I disclose that to the remainder of council. If it's an actual, I can't participate. If it is potential, you can, because you can under state law. And that's how it works. So it, it would be that a councilor who is faced with the situation would know exactly who to go to, would know exactly what to ask for, and would know exactly what disclosures they would need to make. That's how I drafted it.
My opinion, if you remove the word voting, that would make it clearer. Because then, what you say, then, then immediately, if there's a conflict of interest, and you go to your Ethics Commission, then it makes sense.
It actually, I mean, I don't know what you think, Peter, but that actually does make, you just remove the word voting there, or put in some other word, or?
Yeah. I mean, you can, if you want, practically speaking, at the beginning of the public hearing, that's when you don't get to participate in the public hearing and then disclose it. The mayor's script has it.
I have the script. This is for quasi judicial. And during the script, I do ask these questions. Does any council member wish to declare any ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest regarding this matter? Does any party wish to challenge any council's impartiality or legal capacity to participate in this matter? And these are obviously the quasi judicial. The other areas that, you know, the conflict of interest is really going to come in is when the city decided whether or not to allow the outsourced seating on the public area on the property that Starbucks is now on, the developer was the current council president, Pat Kessie. So he stepped away from the dais because he could not participate in that discussion. When there's a budget that's passed, if you are a representative or owner of a company that potentially could do business with the city, it's usually a good idea to clear that you have a potential conflict of interest with the budget, just because you may possibly do business with the city. But doesn't mean you can't participate. It's that you do. I do know my most stark lesson was, 2013, 2012, when we lost the city manager, and council appointed me city council, or as the interim city manager, and I was sitting up here. Doctor afterwards found out that because I was up here running the meeting, I could not be paid for that, that eight weeks of doing that work, because that would be using my position for financial gain. So I spent eight weeks volunteering for the city, doing a difficult, at times, job. So, you know, I, I think there's a lot of areas, and I think that removing the word voting to make it clear does make sense. I absolutely do, just on that part. So.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move past 9:00 p.m.
Hearing a motion to move past 9:00 p.m., is there a second?
Second.
A second, any discussion?
A little bit, little bit of discussion here. I, I think this is going to go for a fair amount of time. I have some issues with, with the changes myself. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better to, to think about this a little bit. Paul brings up some, some valid points. I think there's some personnel.
Why don't?
So that'd be my suggestion, is that we, we table this, and there's nothing urgent here.
Hold on. Let's, let me ask one question. Marissa, were you wanting to make some comments on the proposed language? Okay. So as soon as we're done with Paul here, why don't we have the motion, what we'll do, and this is kind of a compromise, so that everyone can kind of, really kind of regurgitate this stuff, we'll listen to Marissa, we'll continue the public hearing, and tell her that, so this entire agenda is being moved to the next meeting. We'll, we'll continue the public hearing to the next meeting, and, and that way, there can be, we can hear the people that are here tonight. And if more people want to come and talk about it at the next meeting, we can do that. How's that sound, council? How's that sound, Alex? Probably not the best way for your planning out agendas, huh? But. We, we'll make it work. All right. All those in favor extending the meeting, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You. Thank you. Welcome. Please just state your name and city for the record.
Marissa Jacobs, Scapus. So I, I have actually two questions, but I'm going to follow along with Paul, who was speaking about the conflict of interest. So just wanted to sort of echo a few of his sentiments. In terms of regarding the removal of the conflict of interest in the document, for, for, to be thoroughly transparent and maintain that statement that the council continuously makes, which I think is wonderful, being just very more clear in terms of how the council brings forward conflicts of interest, I will say, as a part, as an observer of this process, it does feel wrong that a conflict only is brought forward right when the vote is, given that a lot of the issues that are being brought forward to you, that you're working on, are ongoing for months in advance. So any way that you can clarify conflict of interest, so that it does translate to the public as being transparent, will be very helpful. I won't go into any additional arguments on it because Paul did an excellent job.
Can I ask a clarifying question? You were reiterating his statement. So either, both of you can answer, or just Paul. You had mentioned something about the park work and needing to be talking about a conflict of interest. I was just curious, kind of what you were referencing.
There's red lights on. All I said, all I meant is that I had the opportunity to talk to many citizens, and there just seemed to be a, a trust issue. I've only been here a year. You know, they brought up many things, and they were saying, you know, it was the city doing this, and you know, there is probably something behind that, and blah, blah, blah. There was nothing specific. It was more of my feeling of a, it's important to have trust between city, and the city, sometimes they also means city council and the citizens. And that is all I meant. That there is nothing specific. It was just that trust, and you know, the, as much clarity as we can get and transparency, the better. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going along through the document, I do have a specific question regarding Section 2.04.160 Personnel. I noticed that the entire section was struck out, as it talks about a personnel review committee. Should someone who is an officer in a department discharged, resignation suspended without pay or whatnot, can you please respond as to why that section was removed? And then also, where is this section going to be placed?
So this was a, this was a section that was unique to Scapus. Andy Jordan, who was the city attorney at the time this was drafted, argued strongly against adopting it. It was used in one instance. In that instance, then resulted in a multimillion dollar verdict against the city in a lawsuit. And so the idea, the idea is that right now, we have a clear, some clear lines. So you, as the city council, have one employee in Alex, you have one, well, you have two lawyers, an employment lawyer and a general. And then you have a municipal judge, and those are your only employees. And so I think that Andy's, the, the point that Andy made, and it's been a number of years, was that if a subcommittee of the council can then go in and basically relitigate whether a personnel move should be made or not, then it creates a question for the employees as to who their ultimate boss is. Is, is it the city manager, or is it the subcommittee? There were a lot of other issues that came out of that instance, because, because this was, this group was making a recommendation to the city council. Technically, those were public meetings, but it was a personnel manner. And then there were just a wide variety of problems that came to light as a result of this. And so I think that what I was asked when, when we initially looked at this, is, is there anything that you feel strongly about? And what I said was, you know, the vision and values of every city are different. And Alex and I have tried to kind of reflect this in a way that represents Scapus and how you like to do things. But you can tweak it however you want. But the one section that I believed raised the largest specter of liability was this, because it created a lack of clarity as to who the final decision maker is. And I think the thing is, if the city manager begins making a bunch of personnel decisions that everyone disagrees with, then really the action that the city council probably would want to take is with the city manager. If there's this second bite of the apple, where an employee can go to, I mean, again, we have a lot of public meeting issues, because there, the employee would technically go into a quorum of you in order to trigger this, and then you'd be appointing a subcommittee, and the last time it was done, the lawyer was in there, and the lawyer was maybe taking notes, and there was, and, you know, as, anyone that's spent a lot of time with public meetings law knows that a advisory committee that is there to provide advice to the ultimate council, they in themselves, those are public meetings. And so technically, those would be public meetings, because it's a subcommittee, not the city council, that might be able to do something in an executive session. And then you're discussing personnel manners. And there's, for all of those reasons, I just thought that the potential liability associated with this section was, was significant, as did Andy, who I think was probably a better lawyer than me. But when we kind of come down on the same side of things, I, I think we're, generally trust my judgment. You guys could have some review. I just don't know how we would structure it.
So I was actually a council member when that was passed, and I spoke against it as well, because it played out exactly as Andy Jordan and I warned it would play out. Here's the biggest problem, is that we, in our charter, it gives clear authority to our city manager. So like, like he said, that it confuses who the bosses are. So if you have a department head who says, I don't really have to listen to my boss, the city manager, and cozy's up to three or four council members, you get worse than a conflict of interest. You get, you know, a, a real bad mix of situations that blow up. And you need to have a city manager that's able to do their job under the charter, and the charter's pretty clear that it's their role. Our role, ours is with the city manager, whoever that city manager is. I think like Peter said, is, if we don't like that this, what the city manager is doing with department heads or staff, that's an issue we have with the city manager. We take over with city manager. Reviewing something like this created a time bomb, and it, it was, it was horrendous. It was the worst years of serving on the city for me during that whole time. It came out of, interestingly enough, it came out of a police of chief being fired. And some of the supporters got this through the council, and even against the recommendation of the city attorney. It just sat there for a decade before it was even used. It's only four department heads. But, you know, I mean, I think that at the end of the day, if we want a different form of government, then we change the charter and go to a different form of government, which I think the only form of government out there that's different would be City of Portland's. I don't know if that would work. Or the city administrator form, which tends to, you know, not, it creates problems. I think we have to be able to trust who our city managers, who we hire as the city manager, to do their job. And if we have an issue with the city manager, and how they're treating their employees, especially their department heads, then we take up that issue. And we can, whether it's through reports of wrongdoing, or, or other reports that we hear or feedback, we do annual reviews on our city managers. And we also, you know, And we also, you know, if the issue comes up, our, our role is with the city manager. We hire and fire the city manager. I don't like to say that, but that's what we do. I mean, if the city manager goes outside of what the council visions or wants, that's our only option. Discipline and termination is like any other employee. That's the one that works for us.
The school district follows the same model.
Well, and I think they do it because it protects, it protects the lower down employees from exactly the issues that people bring up, you know? The, the idea that so and so has only got the job because they've got the support of city council, not because they're doing a good job. Or, you know, and that creates worse optics for the city than almost anything else you do. And I think that's why it, I was against it when it was first thing. I, even during the, one time it was used, went back and looked up my quote. I can't remember it now because that was several years ago and my brain's getting older and older. But it was, you know, I mean, it was very specific that what happened is exactly what Andy and I thought was going to happen. And I didn't always agree with Andy on all his opinions, but on that one I was right with him. Who is the former city attorney? And that's why when we came up with this, I specifically said, we got to get this out because it's, it, it doesn't work. And again, I don't know how else to do it other than based on how our charter is written, that we have direct supervisory over the city manager and we trust them to do the rest of the work.
Well, and the, the recommendation goes to the full city council, but the employee would be entitled to get a copy of it. And, you know, they would just use it in any litigation. Because let's say that the committee found that they had not, that, that they would not be able to, you know, that they had done something illegal or something of that, or that didn't reflect the policies of the city, dissent it. And then the manager that walks it back, at which point their authority has been undermined, or the person gets fired, it's the city manager's choice. And then the person requests their personnel file and then, you know, CIS suddenly, yeah. We have a group that's, that's trying to make conclusions of fact and investigate something. It says you can do it in executive session, but it's not the city council. It's not a form of the city council. To me, I don't, I don't think that you can. I think they would be public meetings. And I think that, I don't know frankly, how you would efficiently go about doing that sort of investigation. I mean, generally a third party outside investigator is brought in. One would hope if something is prior to a decision be made. And I mean, you guys can keep it in, but I, I would not be the, it wouldn't be three city councillors and me participating because I do not want to get sued. It would have to be Ashley.
Peter, does, does the League of Oregon Cities have anything comparable to this 2.4.160?
I, I have never seen anything comparable to this in any city's code. The only thing I can think of is there's one jurisdiction which shall remain nameless, but the city manager actually wasn't their employee, but like the city treasurer, the auditor, the, it listed like five positions that were under the council's direction, but the city administrator wouldn't. And it was just a really kind of odd setup and I don't know why it happened.
So the, so the league doesn't have anything?
Nothing.
That was my question. Thank you.
I could almost guarantee that the league would strongly recommend against this. In fact, I've talked to league lawyers about it in the past and they would, A, they're going to say it violates your charter. So, and then they wouldn't even need to go further.
Thank you very much. That was my question. I just wanted to understand.
You got a good debate on it. Thank you and congratulations. And so we've agreed to, after that, we will continue the public hearing until our next council meeting. Seeing nothing else, oh, well.
We have plenty more.
Oh, we do have plenty of more. All right. Our next city council meeting is actually Tuesday, September 7th, with a urban renewal agency meeting at 6:00 PM, city council meeting. Can we do that one to follow because it might be long? Or is the urban renewal meeting expected to be an hour? Okay. All right. Alex, you have anything? Thank you. Councilor Miller.
Just a big thank you to everybody for the 100-year advising. You really stood out. I mean, it was very apparent, the effort and the role that you were taking. And I just really appreciated it. Everybody really appreciated it. We had so many very positive comments. Pete, thank you very much. Very clear how much effort you put into. And there were some very long days by all of you guys. So I just want to say thank you. And I don't know if there's something else that we can do to acknowledge all of the volunteers and the city staff that contributed to the 100-year. But just looking at the way that it turned out, it just seems like it's very, we need to do something to recognize the city staff and the volunteers.
Good idea. What's your polling?
I'd like to follow up as well. You know, I, I think that this, the centennial was a huge success and, and all the work that you guys put in, Pete, Isaac, you guys and city staff as well. You guys did a phenomenal job. It was a great event. Heard such great comments from the community and they're actually excited. Hopefully you guys will do it again. That's my first comment. My second comment, I, I would like to, you know, we've, we've kind of gone through a lot this last year, really. We've had a lot of different controversies going on. I really do want to recognize Alex, our interim city manager. She has really stepped up. Her communication's been phenomenal. I cannot have any, all but good words for her and, and the job that she's done. So personally, I, I'm very happy.
Councilor President.
I wrote some notes. The first one about the centennial, just a heartwarming, successful, safe event in the midst of a heat wave and a pandemic. I think we came out really on top with it. I, I thought it was great that we were able to showcase some of our parks and local amenities by having some things split. Wasn't always ideal at some points to have two different locations, but I think we showcased a lot of great things. Isaac, thank you, and the whole team and committee and everybody behind the scenes for making it happen, especially even this weekend. I'm, I'm sure you're exhausted. Can't imagine how many steps you got in. You know, I, I heard a lot of people saying, we need an annual event. It's just so great, you know, now that the Sauerkraut Festival has kind of dwindled a little bit and we brought it back last year and then this was our big event this year. So in some capacity, it would be nice if we could have some sort of a continual city annual event. I thought it was great if we could maybe continue like an annual walk or run. And perhaps maybe whether we choose as a city, the cause, or maybe like a city project that the funds would go towards to maybe add in, you know, different, like additional smart, small like park amenities or things, you know, kind of plug away on the list that we'd, we'd love to add and have in the city. And, and lastly, I suggest being out a survey. I think it would be great to get feedback from the citizens who participated and attended this weekend. I think there was a lot of feedback that was positive and, you know, and constructive criticism just to assist in, in an event of this nature in the future. And maybe perhaps it would help us create a list of names of people who would be interested in helping in an event like this in the future. My next comment has to do with our police department. Chief Miller began at the city as a reserve officer and was hired in 1999 as a patrol officer. He then worked his way up the ranks to interim police chief in 2013 and police chief in 2014. One of his legacies will be his focus on community policing and developing a positive relationship between our city's police force and our community members, an objective that surely has become even more important in the recent years. On August 4th, 2021, Chief Miller made the decision to step back from his role as police chief. I want to personally thank Norm for his years of dedication to our community. And I thank him for choosing to continue to serve our citizens. In my opinion, it is unfortunate that the past and present police personnel have failed to share their frustrations until this evening when they came in front of us. I also want to remind council that our role in personnel matters, as we just talked about this evening, as the city transitions to an interim and then into a permanent hire of the police chief. My next update had to do with, kind of in conjunction with the Grabhorn property. I know that the person rec committee, as well as the ad hoc committee, really wanted feedback or kind of bridge this gap that we have with the school district and some of the field use or amenities that they have and what they can offer. I was on the phone, so I wasn't able to see exactly who was there, but I know that myself and Alex and Dave were present on the phone call last Monday with representatives from the school district. It was a meeting that went in a semi-positive direction. I think we ended on a good note where we acknowledged that the school district needs help in whether it's park maintenance or facilitation of use. Dave was very overly generous to even offer that we'd be willing to buy or help take care of some of these pieces that they find might just be too overwhelming. We're in the business of serving our community. And if the school district doesn't have the means or the, you know, the capacity or the willingness to have some of their assets shared in the community, that we would be willing to help with that. That's really important for us. So I think that either myself and Dave or just Dave or myself will be present on the phone virtually at the Grabhorn ad hoc committee meeting this Thursday, just to kind of go over some details with them. But in the end, it really has come across that there is a need for sports amenities. My last comment, I'm not following the rules. Usually you're supposed to sandwich things with a positive and then wrap up with a positive. This can be interpreted in a positive or a negative. I feel like personally, comments made by the public or comments made by council or assumptions that have been presented come across as very disrespectful. And I feel that when I look on forums online of people discussing how the city functions or decisions that we're making, they don't have the information. That's correct. And the thing that's disheartening to me is they're not either willing or knowledgeable to know that there is a source that maybe has more accurate information and seeking out that accurate information in order to make decisions that have all the facts. And I think I have never felt as a citizen prior to joining the council that this was a place that the doors closed and the blinds are shut. I don't, I don't feel like the mayor runs a meeting that way. I don't feel like you're not present in the community or that we don't want to be a part of the community, that our faces aren't here to serve. And I think that I would encourage people not only to attend meetings, but to make phone calls, email, whether that's to us or staff. And before coming in front of us with accusations or really strong comments that they have done some background work with it, or even just how they approach council or staff in asking the question rather than forcefully saying something. I think, I think the tone in this council chambers and in the community, this needs to be a little more humble. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hogan.
Well, mine's going to be a little more upbeat.
Uh-oh.
You know, the, the marvelous centennial that we, we all experienced, you know, is a, is a tribute to our, to our marvelous staff and, and council and, and the amazing volunteers. But I would just like to set a, set aside to kind of a league onto them all, onto themselves, from just absolutely extraordinary folks. And I'm going to start with, with Isaac. I mean, you, you just, you just, you can't believe what, what this guy did under really difficult, tough conditions. It, it's amazing. Janet Williams, she's beyond belief. You know, how, how she can function and keep a good, a good smile on her face and heart and cheer and energy and so forth, it's just absolutely extraordinary. Robbie Backus, the guy that, you know, just graduated from NYU in economics. And he, he's, he donated unbelievable amount of time and energy and enthusiasm. And was there, I was there Sunday, I was there all days, but I checked on Sunday afternoon. And here he and Mike Sykes are still cleaning up, you know, as, as is Pete. Pete's working out there and Pete's older than I am, for God's sake. You know, so it's, it's really something. Paul Fidrich, if you didn't watch Paul and you weren't, if you weren't impressed with Paul, there's something wrong with you. The guy's just amazing and he, and he's quick, he's fast, he's adaptable. And he's even really a good announcer for the Doggy Dash. It was, it was unbelievable. But, but you, again, Mike Sykes. But, you know, I'm going to just, an absolute tip of my hat to Pete McQ. I don't know how, how he does what he does. It's, he's just absolutely extraordinary. He, he really, that these people are in a league, league by themselves. And how we are so lucky to have these kinds of folks in our community and our staff. Boy, we, we are in a good position. So I'm going to end, end there.
I'll be pretty short. I just want to say my family and I had a fantastic time over the Friday and Saturday coming down to the centennial. It was great to see the number of people, just the excitement and to be able to have something for our community to rally around was fantastic. I will echo everyone. Pete, on behalf of the council and your participation and facilitation of bringing so many community members, stakeholders together, without your dedication to seeing the vision of what this event could be, I don't think it would have been anywhere near what it was. So I appreciate all of your hard work and effort and time. Probably what's keeping you so young, right?
Yeah.
Top of that, I do want to point out our staff, Isaac especially. Isaac, could you remind me of what your title is with our, with our city? Yes. I, I forgot, but I'm, I'm very grateful. Your work and efforts to this show me that amazing things can, can come from no matter where you are, what rung on that ladder you are. I think it also speaks boldly of, of your person. And so on behalf of our community, thank you for all of that energy and commitment that you put forth to make that event amazing. We are getting way more for our dollar for the amount of expertise and professionalism that you bring to the cities, to your, to your role with the city. So thank you. That, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you for the nice comments. I would like to say first of all, that I don't want my comments earlier today to diminish how strongly I feel about the good work our staff does. I, I really do believe that my comments were more directed toward the process and, and just, and how it fits in with this grant that we're looking at. And so I don't want to be misinterpreted on that. But also regarding the centennial, I got to chime in. You know, I, I'm sure I drove Isaac crazy a lot of times. But I have to acknowledge he just did a fabulous job. I mean, he kept us on track and I just really appreciate all he did, Isaac. And if we had an MVP, it would be Paul. Because Paul, he pulls stuff together, did a website, you, you name it. And I tell you, that run for Neil, it really was, it kind of got you right here. It was a special thing. You watched their family and how proud they were to be able to do this for their, their child. It was, and when the aunt gave the nice comments that she gave and afterwards. Anyway, it was just fabulous. Nice job, Paul. Joel, every time there's a problem that came up, it's always Joel that seemed to figure it out. Usually identify it and then figure it out. I mean, Dave, we're setting up for the race. I mean, we had unbelievable problems and I, I think, I don't think we can get by this one. Anyway, he figured it out. Thanks Joel for all you've done. Tyler at the end down there, 106 degrees out and we're inside the tent. I don't know how hot it was in there. It was a lot more than 106 degrees and we're still working out there. And Tyler stuck with me. I appreciate that Tyler. Thank you. Anyway, it was really a team effort and I really was proud of our community. anyway, it was really a team effort and I really was proud of our community. And I also would just like to say that I appreciate a lot of what Chief Miller's done too. Really was into community policing. It's kind of easy to, I don't know what the right words are, but throw them under the bus when the ships are down, but he did a lot of good things too. And I, I would think that needs to be acknowledged and I would like to acknowledge that in my comments because, uh, I've known Chief Miller for a long time and I think he's always had the best interests of our community in mind. You know, it's not an easy job, but even when you do the right thing, a lot of times you're going to get criticized anyway. Old saying, you know, uh, no good turn goes unpunished. I think, uh, that applies a bit to Chief Miller. Anyway, I think that's pretty much it. But I do appreciate all the support from the city for the centennial and leader Mike Sykes did fabulous job too. So, thanks everybody.
Thank you, Pete. Uh, I want to start with the centennial, uh, it think, starting with Pete. All the work you did every time coming in, what, so our council meetings with a stack about this, but of information, things to disseminate, questions. Uh, to the volunteers, including Paul, the work you guys did. It was a fantastic event. Having done wings and wheels for five years, doing a run, I think three of the years and understanding the dynamics of having a run and an event going on. It's a, it's, it was an amazing event. Uh, I was dedicated to doing the run. Hurt my knee two and a half weeks before the run, so I couldn't train the last two and a half weeks. So I was nowhere near in shape. So I just wanted to finish it. And I took first place, a hundred and first place. But it is a first place. It's just, there's a hundred people ahead of me. But you know what? Sometimes finishing the race is more important than where you place.
Always.
Depending on what condition you're in. You know, I used to run. I mean, I've done hood to coast. I've done a 15K shamrock run. So coming back, cycling back and getting back into it was really good. And I, I think the stat, you get the work that was done was amazing. Uh, and Isaac, I, I think Isaac was kind of my, uh, my personal secretary at points during the week. It's like, okay, where do I need to be? Do I have talking points? And within minutes, Isaac would have the information for me. There, the, this has changed, like any event that you're over, you're running, things are going to change as the event happens. During the five years and even the year I was OMA president, we had an summer conference in a hundred and five degree temperature. And I joke now that my main role was, uh, this meeting over here has been canceled because of the heat and we're moving it indoors to AC. Um, but there's all these little things that are going to happen leading up to the event that you can either just roll with the punches and take the event that's going to happen as what it is and be happy with it. Or you can let those, those negatives leading up to it destroy the event. And it looked like whatever happened, you guys persevered. You know, the heat was coming. Figure out a way to make sure people could stay cool. It, it's a, it's a tough thing. August events are tough because there's always going to be the chance that we get these hate waves in August. And I'm very proud of everyone on that committee that did that volunteered, gave up time. City staff that, uh, put in extra hours to make sure this event could go off, gave up their Saturdays in a lot of cases to come down and support it. You know, Tyler sitting there at the front of the, you know, beer garden, making sure people are of age getting in and it, it overall is a great event. The, uh, the run was a fabulous run. I mean, it's a, it was a mix of a good run and a challenging run. And I actually got a chance to talk to, I can't remember the guy that organized the run. Because our last year, wings and wheels, we, uh, we actually had the, uh, half marathon certified as a half marathon that could, people could run in it and they could. So they could qualify for other events. Which is a huge thing in the running world. And our run was a flat run. So it was a speed run. So that helped. That's also an attractive thing for people trying to get qualified for events. But I firsthand know the work that you all did and it just boggles my mind that it was pulled off and the work that everyone did. I, having been there, I am so proud of you guys. You guys did great. It was a great event and couldn't have been better. Um, you know, when it comes to the Grabhorn Parks Ad Hoc Committee, and I've told this to a couple, uh, Jim Lycan's was talking to me about the dog park. I am pretty much going to accept whatever recommendation the Grabhorn Parks Committee presents to the city. That's my position is that if they say we have to have the road as part of it, or if they say, can we really look at the, not do it? I'm going to take what they say seriously. And that's going to be, you know, part of my decision-making process on, on what happens because you know, there's, there's other dynamics we look at, but ultimately we need to listen to, we put, we've in charge of this committee with designing it. So that's, you know, what, whatever comes from them is what I'm going to support. Unless of course, they say they want a cattle farm or, you know, something that's outside of the scope of what a park should be. Um, when it comes to, I hope that we can have further discussion on what we can do with, uh, the, uh, the ball filled house request this morning, or this morning, during the beginning of the meeting. I know we can't do the SDC things, but find out if there's some, what we can do. It would be nice to, to be able to do that. So.
Thank you.
I, you know, I, you know, I've known the more family for a long time. And, you know, I remember when, when he passed away and I, uh, it just, it would be really nice gesture from the city on a, you know, on a community effort to build something to honor a young man who went through that. So, um, the rest of it, council, thank you for everything. And Pete, keep being you. You know, it, the thing of it is, is that in the ice, I'll always say this, we don't want to be sitting here being group think. We want people, if they have concerns or thoughts, to bring them up to fire our thoughts so that we're not all in line. Group think is the worst thing that could happen. You know, that's actually what makes people think it's a corrupt process when there's not good, solid debate about things. So don't ever feel like just because we disagree that it is personal. It's just, okay, good. Because sometimes it's like, I don't, I don't want you to feel like that. I just want to make sure that.
He's got thicker skin than that.
Yeah, keep, keep bringing up, you know, I mean.
Yeah, right?
I always, I always tell people, if you want to find out how bad of a person you are, run for public office, someone will tell you. So, yeah, I'm sure it is, but no, you, I, I appreciate the fact that you come, you have a difference. That, that's that what, that's what makes council strong. Having different people on the, on a council that come from different backgrounds and have different thoughts and ideas about things. And if you don't and can't have those conversations, then you, you run the risk of having that group think where, you know, you're just not having good, solid debate. And I don't want that. So anyways, beyond that, thank you. Congratulations to everyone. Fabulous job. Meeting adjourned.